Good afternoon, colleagues. I'll ask you please to turn your computers on. I guess I meant the visuals. I see councillor Hillier smiling. I wished he wouldn't, but there you go.
Sorry, I'm watching councillor Helmer's daughter run around. It's very cute.
Ah, there you go. See councillor Helmer can't see those of us in chambers smiling, but we're all smiling just incredibly so. I'll just ask the clerk to confirm quorum, please.
You do have quorum, your worship.
Thank you very much. I think some will be joining us if they're not here now, but I'm not aware of anyone that's formally reached out and said they are not in attendance. So with that, I will welcome the public and colleagues to the fourteenth meeting of city council, virtual meeting that's held during our COVID-19 emergency. We invite the public to check the city's website for current details of COVID-19 service impacts. Meetings can be viewed via live streaming on YouTube and the city website. The City of London is committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for council standing or advisory committee meetings and information upon request. To make a request for any city service, please contact accessibility@london.ca or 519 661 2489 extension 2425. First, colleagues, I'll look for any disclosures of near interest. I have deputy mayor Morgan, please.
Yes, from the fourteenth report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee, item eight, which is 4.1 from the committee agenda, which is an appointment to the University of Western Ontario Board of Governors, I'll declare an interest on that as the University of Western Ontario is my employer.
Thanks very much. Any other conflicts to be declared? I see councillor Helmer, please.
Just on the same item for the same reason, I'll declare on that as well.
So noted. Thank you very much. Any other declarations? I see none. So with that, colleagues, we have four recognitions. Normally, we don't have this many, but I think that as you, for those who are not sharing in them, you will understand why they are so important. I'll start with the deputy mayor, please.
Thank you, your worship. More than three months ago, after their incredible gold-winning performances at the Tokyo Olympics, Londoners Maggie McNeil and Damian Warner continued to put our city on the map. Most recently on Sunday, Maggie McNeil was named the best female athlete of Tokyo 2020 by the Association of National Olympic Committees in Greece. Just a few days earlier, late last week, Damian Warner, who set an Olympic record while winning gold in the decathlon, was named by the World Athletics Organisation as a nominee for its annual Male Athlete of the Year Award. These nominees were selected by an international panel of athletic journalists, council representatives from the World Athletics Associations. The winner will be announced in December at the World Athletic Awards. Both of these recognitions for Maggie and Damian respectively remind us yet again how remarkable and truly unforgettable each of their performances were at the Tokyo Olympics. Londoners of all ages should feel proud to have a pair of individuals such as Maggie and Damian consistently and repeatedly representing our city on the world stage and here in our community. Congratulations to them both.
Thank you very much. I'll now call on councillor Van Hols, please.
Thank you, your worship. I'm sure you're aware of the passing of Canadian theatre legend Martha Henry. I wanted to acknowledge how fortunate London was to have had her serve for eight years as the artistic director for our own grand theatre. Countless people have benefited from the ongoing impacts of her influence. How wonderful that such an extraordinarily extraordinary talent who won three Geminis, five Genies, the Governor General's Lifetime Achievement Award, was a recipient and companion of the Order of Canada. How wonderful that she chose our city from 1988 to 1995 to be the place where she would nurture talent and pass on her experience. Much has been said already about this great light, but I believe she deserved our mention and gratitude here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Van Hols. Colleagues, I have the third recognition, and that is to recognise my old friend Bill Paul, also known as London's town crier. I've known Bill for some, almost forty years, and I was so saddened to learn of his passing because he truly was our beloved town crier. For those who may not know his name, they almost certainly recognised his beaming face and booming voice. Over the years, Bill selflessly and enthusiastically brought joy and laughter to countless number of Londoners. It's to be said that Bill Paul was one of a kind. There's never been another like him in our city, and sadly, I do not believe there ever will be. That's not to say each of us cannot try, however. That, in my view, is the best way to honour his memory, by spreading laughter and joy ourselves, the way Bill did for decades, to friends, family and strangers alike. May Bill Paul's legacy live on always through acts of kindness, goodwill and friendship. And colleagues, as I ask you to pause briefly to honour Bill's memory, I will say this in his honour: we will answer the bell in his memory and to honour him. Now, colleagues, I'd like, now, thank you. I'd like to turn this over to councillor Lewis, please.
Thank you, your worship. Colleagues, I rise today to draw to your attention and to the attention of all Londoners that with the presentation of the first poppy this Thursday to his worship, Mayor Holder, the annual poppy campaign for the Royal Canadian Legion will begin once again. This is a particularly important year as our legions struggle to provide support for our veterans with the lack of opportunities they've had for fundraising during COVID. It's also important because this year marks the hundredth anniversary of the poppy as our symbol of remembrance. So as you see myself and other volunteers from the Royal Canadian Legion out and about over the course of the next couple of weeks, I encourage you to give generously donating to the poppy boxes and take a poppy in remembrance of Canada's fallen.
Thank you councillor Lewis. Colleagues, there are no confidential matters to be considered in public, and as we typically deal with our issues in council in closed session, I'll look for a change in order so that we can move item four, including the tenth report of council in the closed session, to after stage thirteen bylaws. So with that, I'll look for a mover, please. Councillor Van Hols, seconded by councillor Van Mirberg, and thank you. Let's call the vote on that.
Motion carries thirteen to zero.
Thanks very much. Colleagues, the motion to approve the minutes from the meeting held on October fifth, twenty twenty-one requires a mover. Could I please? Councillor Lewis, seconded by councillor Hillier. Any comments, any discussion? Seeing none, we will call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to zero.
Thank you. Your attention, item six, communications and petitions. It's my intention to deal with this all in one motion, but six point one involves the filling of vacancies on municipal council, and we have received a significant number of communications in that regard. And you will see under item six two, the vacancy specific to Ward Six, again, a number of communications, and we're asking that these be referred to the appropriate committees' sections as we review them. Six three deals with the items related to the Masonville Secondary Plan, and we're suggesting those two communications be referred to Planning Environment Committee appropriately. So for all of those references, as we typically do, I'll ask for a mover and a seconders. There were, please, councillor Pelosi, seconded by councillor Hopkins. We'll call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to zero.
Thank you. There are no motions which notice has been given, which now turns our attention, colleagues, to the several reports we have, starting with the seventeenth report of Corporate Services Committee. I'll call on councillor Cassidy, please, to present the report.
Thank you, your worship. I will put the report on the floor with the exception of, from the council agenda, items four, five and six. From the report, it's items two point one, four point one and five point one. So that means I'm putting one, two and three on the floor at this time unless somebody would like those pulled.
Does anyone wish any of the items voted on or dealt with specifically separately? I see deputy mayor Morgan.
Yes, my apologies to colleagues, and I know councillor Cassidy is dealing with this one separately, but I do require number four, which is the council compensation review task force to be pulled from separately. I'll be declaring a conflict on that one as well, because one of the individuals considered for the task force is my direct supervisor at the University of Western Ontario, which is my employer.
Any other items that colleagues wished to have voted on separately? Councillor Cassidy.
So right now I'm putting items one, two and three on the floor. That's, one is the near interest disclosure, and two is two point two from the committee report, and three is two point three from the committee report. So those three items are on the floor right now.
Any comments or questions? Councillor Hopkins.
Thank you, your worship. I would like to just make a brief comment on two point two point three, which is number three, which is the report on the twenty twenty-one conference, AMO conference that was held in August. Can't believe it was that long ago, but London was the host. It was a virtual conference, and it was something that I felt that we, as a London team, did a great job. We met with a number of ministers, housing, economic development, health, mental health, education and environment. And as a team, we went in showcasing the unique London solutions, as well as speaking to the community needs and opportunities that still need to continue with the province of Ontario. I want to thank staff and the councillors that attended the conference, and also the community members that were part of this virtual conference, RBC Place and Tourism London. We did put a good show on for representing London, and one of my moments that I recall at the conference was when the president of AMO called me and said he was enjoying the music of London as he was dealing with his emails. And I'm looking forward to hopefully have the AMO Conference in person in twenty twenty-three. So once again, thank you to everyone that contributed to the success.
Thank you, and thank you for your leadership in that regard, councillor Hopkins. I'm only slightly disappointed that with the guitar that I have in my office, I would have certainly been prepared to provide live entertainment. If you needed the show to end early, you'll let me know next time, and I'll be happy to support that. Any other comments with respect to one, two and three? I see none. Let's call that question, please.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to zero.
Thank you very much. Councillor Cassidy.
Four on the council agenda, it's two point one from the committee report, as councillor or deputy mayor Morgan pointed out, he had a conflict. There is another conflict, I believe, on this item, and also it was not unanimous vote at committee, so I will put that on the floor now.
Thank you. With that now being on the floor, I'll ask for any comments or questions. Councillor Helmer, please.
Thank you. I also neglected to declare beginning just on this one, a Mr Lyons, who's part of the group being recommended for the task force, my supervisor at Western.
We knew you'd get it in there, though. That's great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing this, that, seeing, oh, excuse me, councillor Van Hols, please go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. So I voted against this on, at the, at the, at the committee. My concern was that there was to be some discussions of governance about how things will go next term in council, and then that might have had some impact on, on the research we would have asked this committee to do. So I understand that those meetings are going to go forward and that we'll be able to have those discussions, and there'll be some opportunity to inject that information into what's, what's happening here, or at least deal with it at a later time. So at that, I'll, I'll, I'll support it at this, at this juncture.
So noted. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? We'll see none, then we will call the question, please.
Closing the vote, motion carries twelve to zero with one requ.
Ah, sorry, I think there's, just bear with us, councillor, deputy mayor.
I wasn't fast enough to change my vote to abstain on that. I'm sorry. I meant to click the button over there, so I don't know if we can fix that for me or not.
Let's go to the clerk.
We haven't closed it in eScribe, we're just consulting. We have, we have not closed it in eScribe. I'm just going to see if we can fix that.
Just bear with us as we make a, a slight correction to that, colleagues.
That can be corrected. Motion carries eleven to zero with two requ's.
Thanks very much. Councillor Cassidy.
Okay, your worship, up next is four point one from the committee report, and I voted against the committee recommendation, so I would ask the vice chair to put this one on the floor.
Councillor Van Hols.
Your worship, I will put the item four point one on the floor.
Thanks very much. Do you have a seconder? I see councillor Lewis. Comments, questions? I see councillor Helmer.
Thank you. Hopefully, colleagues, have all had a chance to read the communication that came from councillor Cassidy and myself. We are hoping that council will decide to refer, the recommendation was made by Corporate Services Committee, which was a three-two vote on appointing John Fife Miller to fill the vacancy, to a special meeting of SPPC, so we can deal with both these vacancies, the one in thirteen and the one in six, at the same time in the same way, and quickly enough that well, the vacancies filled pretty soon. I will say, you know, I'm going into this meeting, a number of residents said, don't even bother trying to convince people. It's obvious what's going to happen. And I said, I'm going to give it one more try. And we can take our time and do this the same way for both these positions, or we could rush ahead and just kind of put our head down and be very stubborn about it. And I think that would be the most unfortunate way.
Sorry, I'm going to just suggest that the word stubborn not be part of that vocabulary. Colleagues, I'm just trying to be really respectful for all of us, but go ahead.
Sorry, what, what's the objection?
Mine was the word stubborn. It's implying motive to colleagues, and I'm not sure that's appropriate. Just my opinion, so go ahead, please.
So I'm hoping that we will refer this decision so that we can deal with them at SPPC meeting rather than deal with it, deal with it tonight. If we don't refer it, you know, we're going to have to debate the actual appointment for thirteen tonight and then six at some future point, probably. And I just don't think that's the right way to handle it. So I mean, I'm hopeful that even if people have very strong opinions about who they think should be appointed in thirteen, that they can see the value in taking a bit of a breath and dealing with that at a SPPC meeting and making the final decision in mid-November. I think that's a reasonable, practical, fair way of handling it, and I hope that's all we do tonight. So I hope you'll support the referral, even if, for example, you might have supported the committee recommendation to appoint Mr Fife Miller back when that the committee recommendation to appoint Mr. Fife Miller back when that debate happened.
I don't wish to presume, but Counselor Cassidy, are you seconding that?
Yes, your worship.
Thanks very much. Comments, questions? I see, start those who wish to speak to the referral. Counselor Lewis, please go ahead.
Thank you, worship. At this time, I'll, I'll keep my comments just to the referral. I will not be supporting it and I encourage colleagues to move ahead with the decision on the vacancy on Ward thirteen tonight. Counselor Helmer and I will disagree on this respectfully. These seats were vacated at different times. They are on different clocks to fill and they are the result of two different situations. So the submission that suggests we need to deal with them both at the same time and in the same way, for me, is not one that's valid. I realize that colleagues may feel differently, but for me, the clock is ticking on thirteen, different than it is ticking on six, and I'm prepared to move ahead with the debate on thirteen this evening.
Thank you. Other comments or questions specifically on the referral? Counselor Cassidy, please.
So thank you, your worship, and I, and I, I agree with Counselor Helmer, obviously, because I co-signed the letter with him. I do believe that we need to take a very brief pause on this. I also believe we do need to move as quickly as we can. I believe the referral gives us that pause. I think we might not have been here if we had decided on a process at the Corporate Services Committee meeting. This is what the report from clerks had recommended to the committee, that we decide on a process. And what could have happened then, if we had decided on a process at the committee, then we would have had a process in place that could have served for both wards. And unfortunately, we didn't even discuss the process at that, at that time. So I'm supportive of the referral. I think it's important for us to take our time on this without taking too much time. So the proposal is that we go as quickly as possible, possibly to a special meeting of SPPC. And if we do it right, then we can have both of these vacancies filled in the same way at the same time, hopefully, but filled nonetheless in mid-November.
Thank you. Next, I have Counselor Turner.
Thank you, worship, and thanks to my colleagues for, for raising this. I absolutely agree with Counselor Helmer and Counselor Cassidy. I think this is, this is of critical importance for, one, for public confidence in, in our decision-making process and our democracy. And two, to make sure that, that we're consistent in the way that we apply our decisions. The, the risk of moving ahead right now is that, that we, we end up with two separate, completely separate processes that are divorced from each other. And that's, that's not the situation we're in. I recognize there's a sense of some urgency for, for filling of Ward thirteen. I wonder if that's, that's actual or if that's perceived. I do know there are a lot of issues that are being encountered in Ward thirteen, not that different than any other ward in the city. I think that each ward has its, its unique flavor and characteristics. But that said, I, I think, we, we say in, in paramedicine often, walk, don't run. When you walk, it allows you to think, it allows you to, to map out your process, to make sure you have consistency and that to make sure that you make the right decisions without being forced into a decision on the basis of time. And, and I think this very short pause, to be able to have one cohesive discussion about how we fill the vacancies is the appropriate one and I urge my colleagues to, to consider supporting the motion that's on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Counselor Van Hulst.
Thank you, your worship. I won't support the referral for a number of reasons. One, in this case, if we, if we make an appointment tonight, we're done and we have an accomplishment as opposed to just more debate on the way. Number two, Ward thirteen constituents will have a representative sooner and longer if we appoint today. Number three, I don't believe that we would have someone who's going to do a substantially better job in the shorter period of time that they have to work with. Certainly because the, the candidate is a close runner-up. We have as close as we can get to a democratically chosen representative without an election, which I would also support. I, I, I don't have faith in the, the application process that might be suggested. And then funny, I, I think the referral is being moved because a couple of people don't think that the committee's decision was good enough and no decision is going to be perfect and make everybody happy. So to look at this as a high level, I think, is this a seventy-five percent good decision? Are we in the top quartile of things that we could do in this situation? And the answer is, is certainly yes. So I, the things that I would support are choosing a second-place candidate, appointing a previous councillor and, and going to a by-election. But I, I do think that we can move forward quickly and I'm happy to have votes on those options tonight.
Thanks very much. Other comments or questions, colleagues? I would ask the Deputy Mayor, take the chair.
Yes, I have the chair and I'll go to the mayor.
Well, thanks very much, colleagues. You'll note that I was the one who made the, who put forward the, the name of John Fife Miller in the appointment for Ward thirteen. And I just want to give you some quick rationale and, and, and with deep respect to the issue of a referral, I will say, in the spirit of openness and transparency, and it's important that you have a feeling why I stand the way that I do on the issue, I won't be supporting the referral simply because in the absence of a by-election, the committee's recommendation is one that provides a process that I think best respects the principles of democracy and accountability while also respecting the most recent electoral feedback from Ward thirteen voters by virtue of the ranked ballot results that we're aware of. You see, a referral brings the whole process in-house. It becomes a decision made exclusively by council and completely removes the most substantive piece of public input we have to us. Not only does it disregard what voters told us in 2018, it would explicitly prevent constituents from passing judgment on the appointed candidate in next year's election. Under the circumstance, there's no perfect solution, but surely we should strive to utilize as many public inputs as possible when making determinations on behalf of constituents. Simply put, the committee's recommendation allows us to avail ourselves of the best remaining source of constituent input we have, namely those ranked ballot results from the most recent election. We appoint that candidate to serve and we allow that individual to serve if the person wishes to seek reelection in the next year. Having to face the voters and be judged on the basis of performance to me is the ultimate form of accountability. But where I agree with the referral is the desire to do this at the same time and in the same way, as such. If the referral is defeated and the committee's recommendation is supported, I will support Mike Bloxton tonight for consideration of Ward six, to be consistent with the approach that is being considered. And I do that largely for the same reasons as I put forward the name of John Fife Miller to serve in Ward thirteen. Thank you. Back to you, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, I'll hand the chair back to you, Mayor.
Any other comments or questions? I see Counselor Hopkins, please.
Thank you, your worship, for recognizing me. I'm, I don't have the hands up button on this computer, so I will be raising my hand.
Yeah, all good.
So thank you for recognizing me. I, I definitely do support the process, the, support the application process that is outlined in Appendix A and the referral and refer this decision. I think it's extremely important that we just take a pause here. If we don't, for me, moving forward, it, it will be fundamentally wrong in my decision to support someone that is in second place. And that is my, my value, my decision, and I'm just expressing it here and now because it is very important that we not politicize the next municipal election. To me, it's that simple, that we not sway the municipal election. We should be able to give opportunities to all candidates that are running in these wards a fair chance. And that is nothing to say anything against the second-place candidates that want in these two wards. In fact, one of them is a good friend of mine. I still do not believe that we should set a precedent that we now, as a council, will decide that we are going to have second-place candidates filling in council, council seats when terms aren't completed. We're setting that precedent here and now. I think we just need a moment to rethink what we are doing here before moving forward. So I am going to be supporting the application process. Think to me, it's the most transparent way. It would be great if we could have a by-election, without a doubt. I think we all probably agree that is the best way forward, but we do not have the time that it would take to go forward with that. So this, to me, is the application process that we've done in the past. This is not new. And for me, these constituents in these two wards, it is important the experience part of the candidates be addressed because they need to start right away, be accessible to their constituents. And the only way that can happen is having that experience. And again, I would urge everyone to support this. Don't think it's going to be such a bad thing if we just pause a bit and be consistent.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I'm good.
Thanks very much. I, I thought it was done. I didn't mean to be rude. Any other comments or questions, colleagues? With that, we are voting to refer and that will be on your screen in just a moment.
Closing the vote, six to seven.
Thanks very much. I'll turn it back over to you, Counselor Van Hulst. I'm sorry, what we now have then is the, is the motion back on the floor, which has been moved and seconded. Comments or questions? I see. I've got Counselor Helmer and then the Deputy Mayor, please.
I think it is a tremendous mistake to consider only one person to fill this vacancy. We had an election three years ago where people decided who their preferences were. They voted and Ariel Kaibaga was elected. Now she's resigned. A lot of time has passed. I do not think it is appropriate to just appoint the second-place person out of habit, like while we had an election and they came second, and say that's the reason we should have put somebody in to fill a vacancy, especially when we have no sense of whether this person wants to run again in 2022, in which case they would be carrying an unearned incumbent advantage, which we would be giving them by appointing them right now. We had a council, like not that long ago, that behaved like a political party and tried to get its buddies to do everything it wanted and blocked out people they didn't agree with. And that was bad for the city of London. We got a lot of the same tactics and some of the same people pushing for this person to be appointed to fill the vacancy. I am saying in the strongest possible terms, this is the wrong way for Mr. Fife Miller to come onto the council. He wants to get elected to the council, he can run again in 2022. Appointing him is a mistake that people are going to regret. It's not the right way to do it, especially what are we going to do, a seven-six vote? To appoint this guy who came second? I could see this coming a mile away. It's so disappointing. We had the vote on filling the LTC vacancy. Mr. Fife Miller was one of the options, right? Nobody voted for him. Everyone went for Stephanie Marantet, Di Batista, or a couple of other people. And I could see it coming from them. And people told me that I don't even make arguments. No one is listening. I've never been so disappointed, honestly. I said when I left the, the Deputy Mayor's chair, I think the best is yet to come for our council. I was wrong. This is a bad decision.
Thank you. I now have Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Thank you, worship. I'm going to comment on the, the motion before us, which is a multi-part motion. And I haven't really commented on the candidate yet, so I'm, so I'm going to do that today. And I wanted to say a couple of things. First is, as I said, a committee, I, I think there's a lot of different ways that we can approach the appointment process. I think that there are lots of opinions and I think that they, they're all valid. We don't have a specific process to do this. We don't have a specific way that we're required to do it. And I think each situation is, is going to be different, whether it was when Russ Monteith was appointed or the time before that, it's happened at the school board a few times. These things happen in different ways. There's always differences of opinion. And I think I, I certainly have listened to my colleagues over the past little while about some of the concerns that they've raised. There are a couple of things that have come up in the discussion that I have some questions about as I was listening. There is, there is a concern that we would be appointing second-place candidates. Certainly for me, I have no intention of just expressly appointing second-place candidates from elections, but I recognize that the election does provide a certain amount of, of data and information on the intentions of electors at a point in time. With that, there's also the idea that someone should not run because there is an incumbency advantage. There's also the point of view that we should appoint previous incumbents, which I think is, is incumbency advantage in its clearest way. The only people we could possibly consider are previous incumbents. My point being, there is many, many ways to look at this and there are many, many ways to make this a very difficult decision. So what I did was I, I listened to what my colleagues said. I did my own looking at the election results and I have, of course, looked beyond that because I wasn't going to make the decision solely based on who performed that way in the election. But I will say, when I did look at the election results, it is clear that that, in Ward thirteen, was a very close election. And there were two candidates who, who were very close and there is some connections between the two of them. They're both broadly supported across the ward. With Mr. Fife Miller, and Counselor Hopkins said this, that we need someone who is experienced and accessible. Mr. Fife Miller is not only someone who ran in the previous election, but someone who has served on our boards and commissions. He currently serves on the Downtown BIA. He serves on our Committee of Adjustment. He is experienced and he is accessible. And just the other day, I learned that, well, we are contemplating how to make these appointments. He was out on an LDR Downtown BIA walkabout, talking with businesses who have, who have been, been set back by COVID and other circumstances. He was at a bookstore talking about a rock that was thrown in a window. He was, he was at a restaurant who had a member of their staff assaulted in a parking lot, trying to convince them to stay downtown. Like, to me, there are many things that point to this individual as not just someone who did have a close election result, but someone who is actually ready to go and who genuinely cares about downtown. And I think, for me, on this one, I, I'm very prepared to make an appointment of Mr. Fife Miller. I think we would be lucky to have him on council, given he is a strong advocate for downtown. He's out there doing the job now. He's out trying to make things better in the downtown, from, from everything I can see. This guy, this guy cares very much about our city. And, and for me, it's a very comfortable vote to say, yeah, let's, let's take this guy on for a year. Whether or not he runs in the next election, that, that's completely up to him, in my opinion. I, we can't, we can't force someone to run or not run. And I think colleagues can ask that question and decide. And I think colleagues can ask that question and decide for their their themselves on whether that is a positive or a negative. But there is nothing that prohibits someone from running. And I know even Mr. Monteith, when he was appointed, contemplated running again, even though he decided not to. So uh I know this is a difficult decision. Uh I I heard what councillor Helmer said. I think there's going to be a decision on Ward 13. There's going to be a decision on Ward 6. And it is my hope that when we have new colleagues on this council, we spend the time to find where our common ground is across all members of council, including the new folks. Uh we focus that effort and we get a whole bunch of things done in the year that remains. There are things that we we see eye to eye on across the board on this council, housing being being a very clear one. There is a lot, a lot of things we can accomplish with the time we have left.
Thirty seconds.
And I'm hoping that whatever the debate is tonight, whatever the matrix is that that colleagues are making decisions with, whatever the 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 feelings are, whether they're passionate or not, that when this is all done, we come together as a group. We figure out how we're going to move issues forward for the city and we do that as a council of 15.
Thank you. Comments? Other comments or questions? I see councillor Cassidy.
I believe councillor Palozzi had her hand up before me or worship.
I'm sorry, who did? I apologize.
Councillor Palozzi.
Yeah, I thought I'd seen your hand up before and then it was down. Now it's up. So let's go with councillor Palozzi, please.
Thank you, worship. Uh I have no desire to fight it out with councillor Cassidy, but uh thank you. Um I did not support this at committee, the process, to be clear, the process. I have concerns of the lack of transparency at committee. We could have also moved the same process for um the second place candidate in Ward 6, but that was not done, though it could have been. For those who reference ranked ballots, the concept of ranked ballot is for more candidates have a chance to run that could have a similar platform, like more voices, more choice, that you're not worried about vote splitting, who's going to come up the middle, a more transparent election with more conversations, you know. How many opportunities would you go to a house that had an election sign up and say, could I be your second choice? I see you prefer my competitor to really change how residents have an opportunity to engage with their politicians. To me, like that, that was the point of ranked ballots, of opening things up, that you didn't have those kitchen conversation with friends and and potential opponents of who's going to have a chance to run this time because we don't want to split the vote and you know, we're kind of comparable, that that was the point of ranked ballots. Not to be referred back and pick the second person off of it. If if you look at finances and how they went and campaign volunteers, there's normally a person on different ends of the political spectrum that will rise to the top. And in most wards, that seems to have been what happened. At committee, my choice and my concerns were not about the candidates, but really about the process. I don't, I don't want to twist the numbers to fit a narrative and what I want. You can look at how close the vote spread was, how many different electorates came out in each area. If you want to get into it, who had the one of the highest cost per vote? I think people would be interested to look at Ward 13 and who spent the most overall and who had the highest uh one of the highest cost per votes. But that's not what I want to get into. I just wanted a transparent process that we followed for both wards, that people can feel that they were heard. This debate tonight, to me, is sounding more like a public campaign for a selected person, public endorsements. Uh it really does feel like an election to me. Um that's obviously in advance of 2022. Wonderful things have been said about uh Mr. John Fife Miller. Um no doubt, he does a law work in community. Same with Mr. Mike Locksom. I'm not questioning the willingness to serve of the people that are before us or came second. Um I've only ever worked with the people who came first. That was who the electorate chose. I I don't like the process. I'm not comfortable with the conversation before us. I'll be voting no tonight based on the process we're following. By no means is it about the person. And to me, I don't think it's a great way you'd want to start on council, that you come into a position potentially with a six, seven vote. Um you'd be here, but it's it's I don't like it. Um I know it's not the fanciest words, but very clearly, I am not comfortable with the process, the transparency or the way this conversation has gone. Thank you.
Thank you. I do note that councillor Turner's name is ahead of yours, but I'm going to go with councillor Cassidy first, if I might, councillor Turner. And then we'll uh and I've got a speaker's list still.
Thank you, worship. Um I agree with everything uh that uh that councillor Helmer and councillor Palozzi just said. I am completely upset and disturbed by how this has gone. It it really is a lack of process. That it we haven't decided on a process. This is, this is one name that's been brought forward. And for transparency's sake, I understand that there have been comments made in the mi- in the media. I understand the media have gone to certain people and asked them, are they interested? But before that name came forward, I had no idea that this person was interested in this position. I had no comment directly from this individual. Other people have written letters to council publicly for the public record, indicating their interest in serving on this council for the remainder of this term. I've never heard directly from the individual whose name was put forward at committee. We received seventy something letters. Many of those people are not constituents of the ward, do not live in the ward. So we have not heard from Ward 13 voters en masse. To say that this is clearly the decision we should make based on the information we learned through the ranked ballot, through the ranked choice voting system. That was our first year using ranked choice voting. Many, many people did not use the ranked choice voting and they only voted for their number one. So I would say that that was our first step towards ranked choice. And if you looked across the board in every single ward and the mayor's campaign, everyone who was in the lead on the first ballot was the one who eventually won the election. So nothing was different than if it would have been a first past the post election. We did not learn anything new from this first attempt at ranked choice voting than we would have learned through first past the post. This is a red herring to say that the ranked choice voting gives us this opportunity and this option. By appointing this individual, who fully, I understand, intends to run in 2022, we are endorsing as a council, the candidacy of that person. And that is not something that is normally done by a sitting council.
Uh coun- coun- councillor, uh I I I just struggled with that last comment. I don't know that that we are endorsing an incumbency. So I just would ask you to be ca- uh be mindful of the words.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I would.
Go ahead. There's a point of order from, I'm sorry, I didn't see who it was from. Was it councillor Turner? Was that you? Go ahead.
Yeah, if I may, your worship, uh it's it's not for cross debate. She didn't allow councillor Cassidy to continue her comments. Um our our normal procedure doesn't allow for a for a few of points in in mid-debate.
I think for the purpose of uh and I'm and I I'm mindful and you haven't lost any time, so you know councillor Cassidy, I'm going to withdraw the point of order. But again, I'm going to caution all colleagues in terms of the words used. But by all means, councillor Cassidy, please proceed. I've withdrawn that point of order.
So, Mr. Mayor, my my point is that for appearances to the public, there's an appearance that some people might gather if we continue down this path. And my final point is this. To dispute the idea that picking the second place is somehow the most democratic if we are not going to have a bylaw, I mean a by-election. There was a very close vote in Ward 5. And as councillor Palozzi said at the committee meeting, a thousand days, more than a thousand days have passed since the last election. Many things have changed and we have learned much more information across the board about the state of our city and things that have happened. Would the people that voted second for this, for any of the candidates, would they still have picked that person as their second choice? Or would they still have picked that person as their first choice? We don't know, but much time has passed and we believe, we have every reason to believe that people would have changed their minds. In Ward 5, there was a close election. The second place candidate has since that election been charged by the Ontario Provincial Police for violating the Municipal Elections Act in the last election. Would this council therefore endorse that second place finisher to to they sit in Ward 5 if I had to vacate the seat for some reason? I I I sincerely do not believe that that would be the case. And I am very concerned about going down this path.
Thank you. I now have councillor Turner, please.
I thank you, worship. So this is a bit of a mess. It's a lot of a mess. This is as much about the process as it is about the person. And uh I with full respect to the mayor, I I find the the kind of the usurping of any process to determine who should fill the spot rather offensive. To come straight out of the gates and just put one name forward and not even allow us to have the discussion about how we might even consider to fill the spot is is not respectful of this council, of of our process of decision-making and our need to have the discussion. So here we sit, having a discussion where we just uh refused a referral to have a more purposeful discussion about how we do this. Uh and we're going to have a a pretty heated argument about who to put in the chair for Ward 13. Uh as as I listen to some of the arguments, it some of them really seem like people are are contorting themselves in pretzels uh to to make the logic fit to why this makes any sense to move forward with just one name. Yeah, Mr. Fife Miller was the second place finisher. Uh yeah, but as I said at the corporate services committee meeting, if we were to appoint the second place finisher in a provincial or federal election, that would be an absurd proposal. The Conservative won, the seats vacated, so we're going to appoint the NDP. That's what this is. The uh the ranked ballots were a process for us to be able to allow for people close on the spectrum or apart from the spectrum, uh to be able to run against each other without having to worry about eroding votes from each other. That's not quite the way it played out in the election. It did in some places, but in most cases, we we had traditional candidacies of places along the spectrum. Mr. Fife Miller is is pretty much the opposite of which uh Ms. Kaibaga was in in many ways. Uh when we take a look at gender and diversity, we are not well represented on this council. And so now we're just going to exacerbate that without any thought or consideration of that. And that should have been a part of the discussion as we take a look at how we might fill a council seat. But but it never came up. Uh I've made no secret of my position on this. I think a by-election is the only democratic way to fill a vacancy in an elected representative seat at any level of government. The fact that the municipal act allows us to either appoint or do a by-election creates this grenade that's landed in our court. And we haven't diffused it. We're just all staring at it. And uh councillor Helmer is quite right. This is going to blow up. And you will have done nothing to put that fuse out, to put the pin back in the grenade and allow us to have a purposeful conversation about how we fill vacancies in this council. This 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 is really concerning to me. And this is not within any value judgments on Mr. Fife Miller, but more the fa- fact that we have not had any discussion about alternatives at all. And now we've got this mess of your own creation, our own creation. Because when you take a look at at this plethora of letters that we've had where say, hey, support this person, support this person. I'm available too over here. I honestly, uh all because we haven't created a process at all. We haven't communicated that to the public. We're in a lot of trouble here. So I really hope that you guys take it, that we all take a collective breath, take a look at what the impacts of your actions today will be and what they will do in terms of public confidence in this institution for the rest of this term. I urge you to defeat the motion uh and we can reconsider as we move forward from there.
Thank you. Councillor Lehman.
Thank you, your worship. Uh so you know, this is a very interesting uh debate. Some uh comments that have been made tonight have uh disturbed me, um talk of buddies and talk of uh second place finishers with uh charged by police. Uh I don't know what that insinuation means. You know, um this is a big choice for us. Um I think everyone would have preferred a by-election. Uh there's there's um uh I'm with councillor Turner. If there was any opportunity for a by-election here, I'd take it. But uh as a clerk is examined, we wouldn't be through that process to February, a few months away from uh going into another election uh here in London. Uh too long a time for Ward 13 to be without representation. What have other cities have done in in this circumstance? Well, you've had some cities that have appointed second place finishers and you've had other cities that have gone uh on other route with other appointments uh outside of results uh in elections. Uh for me, it's it's very important. That's why I alluded to the need for a by-election is to uh read the tea leaves of what the Ward 13 voters uh would want in this circumstance. We do not know uh today uh what that choice would be because we don't have a by-election. So I have to go to the next best thing. I have to go to the last election and and to see how that uh turned out. And it was a very close election. Um and it was in the time of ranked ballots with many um candidates running. So I I think it was very clear that a good proportion of of the ward um uh would have liked to seen um Mr. Fife Miller uh in this role. Um so that that weighs heavily uh on my vote today. Um then I look at uh the candidates, the candidates' um character uh and experience. Um Mr. Fife Miller uh is a very strong character. Uh I've had the experience of working with him uh on the board of the LDBA for many years. Uh I I don't know of someone who's more passionate about the downtown um and who's a a person who is not rushed to decisions. He he's a very deliberate person uh and considers all sides uh before making the best decision that he thinks is for uh his constituency. Um Mr. Fife Miller has also participated in the committee of adjustments for many years. So he's experienced with the workings of City Hall. Uh he's not an ex-councillor, uh but I think he can get up the learning curve rather quickly here. So I will support uh this candidate um because I think he uh uh has will do a good job of representing the constituents of Ward 13. And I think the voters of Ward 13 uh expressed their confidence uh in him in in the last election, uh which happened to be a ranked ballot. So I think it uh for all the things I hear about ranked ballots, they're it was so good. Now I'm hearing the opposite. Um ranked ballots did its purpose. It 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 brought people together of all different stripes of uh of who our first and second choices would be. Um and Mr. Fife Miller finished a close second, so I think, I do think that carries a lot of weight. So I will support uh Mr. Fife Miller uh for a position of councillor of Ward 13.
Thank you. Next, I have councillor Lewis.
Thank you, worship. I I think it's important as as listening to the debate here tonight that uh make a couple of make a couple of comments on some of the, the language we've heard. Because I, I will say that I, I've been concerned that some of the language I've heard tonight has been rather inflammatory. And I don't think that that's helpful when we're dealing with a decision that is difficult. And, and I will echo what Counselor Lehman just said. If the timing allowed, I would definitely be in agreement with Counselor Turner about a by-election, and I think the majority of us would be. But we've heard from our clerks that the timing really is not a viable option for that route today. But we've heard a lot of, of comment about we shouldn't automatically default to the second place candidate and how we're setting a precedent. While respectfully, we're not setting a precedent. There's flexibility in the Ontario Municipal Elections Act for a reason, to allow councils some flexibility to make different decisions in different circumstances, in my opinion. We've heard, you know, if we were doing this in, in a federal or provincial election, we wouldn't automatically default to the second place candidate. Well, no, we wouldn't, but there's a party system there. And in the provincial and federal elections and in most municipal elections, London being the only outlier on this, we wouldn't have any indication of people's second place choices. But we are in a unique position to look at the ranked ballot data. And I know it was three years ago. So were the votes for all of us. So the logic of those don't count anymore. By that logic, none of us have a right to sit at this horseshoe either. When we think about that data point in time though, not only was it close, but 26% of Counselor Kaibaga's voters also ranked Mr. Fife Miller on their ballot. So I think it's rather presumptuous to assume that Mr. Fife Miller is going to vote opposite to how Counselor Kaibaga would have voted on every issue that comes before us. But the people who will be able to make that decision if he chooses to run again will be the people of Ward thirteen. And after three terms of councillors in Ward thirteen seeking to leave for higher office, the voters in that ward might just want an opportunity to return somebody who wants to stick around and continue to do the job. So for me, the idea that it could only be someone appointed who agrees not to run again, that's just not something that would be a consideration for me. If a candidate chooses to run again in either Ward six or in Ward thirteen, they should do that and the voters will decide on how good a job they've done in the brief period of time. Now here we're giving an unfair incumbent advantage, but six of the 15 councillors who sit at this horseshoe today had to beat an incumbent originally to win their seat. Incumbent advantage is not invincibility. You do a good job or you do a poor job and the voters will decide. And I'd argue that actually six months or so of incumbent advantage before a general election is actually the least preferable form of incumbent advantage because you haven't had a full term to produce a winning record for your constituents to feel that you're worthy of returning to office. But I think it's also important for us to reflect in the fact that there will be a provincial election next spring. There are parties who are saying they would return the ranked ballot privilege to municipalities. And of course, the party in government, government right now has removed it. But I'll guarantee you this, if we just want to throw out the results of a ranked ballot from 2018, if we want to discount them completely, it won't matter which party forms the next provincial government. You're going to have a very, very difficult time convincing a lot of Londoners who used ranked ballot, who ranked their candidates, that we should consider going back to that system. In fact, I think a lot of Londoners who supported it will say, well, you had the opportunity to look at the data when you were filling vacancies and you didn't. So why would we go back now? And I agree, by the way, with Counselor Pelosi's points about the values of ranked ballots. Everything she said in terms of not having candidates remove their names so that there's not vote splitting, all of that is absolutely true. But the other thing we got from ranked ballots and respectfully, Counselor Cassidy, I would disagree with the comment that we learned nothing new. We did learn something new.
Thirty seconds.
We learned who people's second choices were. Now, this is not my only reason for supporting this motion today. I'll be very quick in, in saying that I also know the character of the individual and whose name has come forward. And it's not just the work he's done on the LDBA, the work in the Blackfriars Community Association, the work on the Committee of Adjustment, the Chamber of Commerce Business Achievement Awards. This is an individual who's deeply rooted in his ward and who I'm confident is going to do a good job. So we're not setting a precedent, but we are making a decision that I think the voters of Ward thirteen will ultimately have a say on in the next election.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else wishing to speak on this issue? I see Counselor Hopkins, please.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And I'm feeling very uncomfortable. I know you've allowed it, but when some of my colleagues start to lobby this candidate, it makes me feel very uncomfortable. And I'm just making that comment as a personal comment and how I'm feeling as part of this council at the moment. I may end up saying a few things I've already said, but this is, again, fundamentally wrong, coming up with appointing the second place candidate. And it has not been a difficult decision for me to make, strangely enough. Usually I, 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 I try to look at both sides and, and go through all that turmoil to figure out what's the best way. But this decision has been quite easy for me. We've not even had the conversation of the process. That is wrong. It's that simple. I have had difficulty though deciding if I'm going to protest my vote or not. But given that it's seven six, I'm kind of caught. But that is how I have been thinking. It is wrong what we are doing here. And I'm going to say that this has nothing to do with the character of the second place candidate. Like I said, when we speak to the next ward that we're going to be speaking to, that, that candidate's a very good friend of mine. I would like to think he's a good friend. But that doesn't mean I'm going to automatically just say, yes, you're in. We have to be as transparent as possible to the public. I ran on that a number of years ago and I, I hold on to that transparency that I want to be able to get to the public when I make decisions. That is very fundamental to my decision-making here. I know it was, there was a comment about we need to have someone that is experienced that I, I, I made comments about ready to, to, to start immediately and be accessible to the residents. We have received a number of names that have been brought forward to this council. Do we just automatically just ignore all that? That's what we're going to be doing if we support this motion. I do, regardless, I don't want to go into that debate about swaying the next municipal election, but I think that's what we are doing here if we go forward with, with the motion that's before us. It is important as we talk about having opportunities for candidates running in our next municipal election. And I, we talk about it in other groups that I belong to and trying to get the vote out and having that, those opportunities that we give those same opportunities to anyone that is running in the next election. That is so important. And by coming forward with a second name candidate, we are skewing that. And I am, it is wrong what we are doing here tonight.
Thank you very much. Counselor Holt.
Thank you, worship. I don't think it's wrong. So I also, once again, stress, as, as people said, I don't think we're setting a precedent. I'm, just because we do one thing in one situation doesn't mean we have to do it in another situation. That's the difference between, you know, a council and, and a bureaucrat where there's policies and they're, they're, they have to be followed at, at every point. We just try to make the best decisions we can in this situation. In this situation, certainly a second place candidate is a place to look. And if they're, Mr. Fife Miller had been the 10th place candidate, I, I certainly wouldn't, wouldn't have supported him in this because that doesn't show that there's enough of the electorate behind him. But certainly in this case, there, at that election, there was. And I think that, that group of people will, will be happy with the appointment. And the people that chose him second may well be happy with the, the appointment as well. And really what our job now is, is to fill this post so that somebody capable is, is doing the job of representing the Ward thirteen constituents. And I think this person will be able to do the job. And I, I don't think there's anything untransparent about it. As has been said, there's, there's a number of reasons to believe that, that he would do it. Now, I would be happy if we were appointing a, a previous councillor. And I see that there's, there's two people that have, two previous incoming councillors have put their names forward to, to help us in this situation. I would, I would support those two. A, a process where we're, we're looking at people that have, have never run or have never been in council is not something that I'm comfortable with because it's, it's as far from democracy as, as we can get. It's, so. And then, of course, I would have been happy to move ahead with the, with the by-election as well and wonder if, well, if he, if that might be a better, better solution. But, but that wasn't, that wasn't brought up in the motion. There was a referral to some, some other process that I'm comfortable with, that I think would be less transparent than what's happening now. So those are my, those are my comments. I'll support this. If, if not this, then a, a, an incumbent. And if not that, then I would say, well, we've got no choice but to go with a by-election or just, or just leave it open was another, another possibility. So there's many possibilities. We need to choose one as, as it stands. I'll, I'll continue with my vote in favor of this, this candidate as, as I did in the committee.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who has not spoken wish to speak to this? Colleagues, we're dealing with item 4.1, the filling of vacancies on municipal council and the items there. If there are no other questions, then we'll call the vote. Counselor Hamer, there was a point of order you have?
I'd just like it to be divided and B separate from, sorry, A, B and C separate from D.
So just to be, and that's absolutely so, and that's all within our rights so of, as colleagues. So you're looking to have A, B and C as one item and then D separately? I just wanted to be clear, Counselor Hamer.
Yep.
Okay. Any comments as to what we're, we've been asked to do there by our colleague? All right, so A, B and C are specific to John Fife Miller. D, so you know, is called filling vacancies on municipal council that that report be received. So with that, we will start with A, B and C, 4.1, A, B and C. We will call the question.
Counselor Sully.
Colleagues, now 4.1, that the filling vacancies of municipal council report be received. We'll call the question.
Counselor Hopkins? Closing the vote, motion carries, thirteen to zero.
Counselor Cassidy?
I'll put number six, which is 5.1 from the committee report. This was referred to council with no recommendation.
I wonder for the purpose of this, though, Counselor Cassidy, can we, can we put A on the table, that the seat be declared vacant? And then I think appropriate consideration can be given to the second portion of that. Are you comfortable with that?
Yep, I can do that.
Thanks very much. Any, any comments or questions about A that Ward six be declared vacant? Counselor Helmer?
Thank you. I'm going to move an amendment to the recommendation from committee, which is that we refer the filling of the vacancy to an SBPC meeting. It's very similar to the language that we pass around in the letter, which of course is related to doing both of them at the same time. Now that we've dealt with one, I still think it's a good idea to refer this to an SBPC meeting. We can have people know that there is an opportunity to apply to fill the vacancy and we can fairly consider all those people and make the best choice we can about filling the vacancy.
Yep. Thank you for that, Counselor. I think that really talks to the issue of the means to fill the vacancy. I think what you've heard that we would deal with separately was a recommendation from committee that Ward six be declared vacant. And I'm, if, and, and so I just want to be clear that we're talking about that, not, not the process by which we go to the second step. Counselor Cassidy, are you still comfortable with putting that forward?
Well, your worship, in the letter that Counselor Helmer and I wrote to deal with 4.1, it does include a, a, a part of that referral to declare the seat vacant in Ward six. So I'm comfortable going either way. And it's Counselor Helmer that is, is looking to refer to SBPC. So I think you should check with him to see if he also wants to add that vacancy declaration as part of the referral.
No, I definitely do not. I'm just amending it by adding the other parts.
Okay.
They have to declare the seat vacant.
So, so I'm happy to put part A on the floor and then, and then part B could, Counselor Helmer could make his referral?
So I am going to reference back if I can, because I just want this to be clear. It would have been very simple, frankly, to do A and declare the seat vacant and then go to means and process by which we would like to have that, that seat be considered. However, what you'll see in the letter signed by both Counselor Helmer and Counselor Cassidy is an A and a B, which goes through very specific reference points of, of, of process. So can I ask you, Counselor Helmer, beyond what you have in item 5.1 of your October 20 letter, can you just be super clear so that I understand what is you're looking to add? Please.
I'm just pulling out the letter that we circulated as part of the package and I'll read it out so that everybody understands what I am trying to suggest. I hope that by circulating it in advance, people would have a chance of reading it. So the first part is the part that we have basically in front of us already about declaring the seat vacant. The second part is that it be filled through an application process in keeping with the proposed application process that was outlined in Appendix A, as appended to the staff report dated October 12th, is what the clerks recommend in the first place, with the following additional requirements. With the following additional requirements being set out in the process, there's three of those. One, a brief written statement, no more than two hundred and fifty words on why they would like to serve the remainder of the term as the Ward six councillor, something I think we should know. Why do you want to do this? Number two, a brief written statement, no more than two hundred and fifty words on their experience and qualifications. So to be considering multiple people to fill the vacancy, we want to get a sense of whether qualified or experienced. And then a brief answer to the question, do you intend to seek election to the same council seat in the twenty twenty-two election? There's a note there that says, it being noted that municipal council cannot prevent a person who is eligible from seeking election to municipal council regardless of the statement provided. The first two are there. I think they're very straightforward. The third one is something I'm particularly interested in because I think it's unfair to give people incumbent advantage without having them be elected to the council. That might not be important to other people. I just want to know the answer. So I can just make my decisions with that information in hand.
And I will note, colleagues, that B has one, two, three, and four, and four has items C, and then there are items C and D.
And then the referral is like sending it to SBPC essentially is saying, do this at SBPC and not Corporate Services Committee where we have a smaller group of councillors considering the issue at committee. And then we, part D, I guess, is totally useless since we already appointed one person and didn't consider anyone else for the first one. So you can just drop D. It's not relevant.
So noted. And are you comfortable with that, Councillor Cassidy, in excluding D?
Yes, your worship.
All right, colleagues, that's the motion that's been moved and seconded on the floor. Comments or questions? I see none. I will ask the clerk if the Oh, I do have a comment, Councillor Lewis, please go ahead.
Sorry, your worship, I was waving, but you were looking the other way. I just want to rise on the referral and say, I appreciate Councillor Helmer says he would like the information answered on whether or not they run again. As I've indicated, for me, that's not a matter that weighs in my consideration. But I appreciate that he wants to know that. So I can support that being included. I did want to say that I will support this referral because the council seat in Ward six has been vacant a very short period of time. I myself have not had a full opportunity to consider how to move forward on this. I've had a lot more varied, I will say, correspondence and communication from people who live in Ward six. The consensus is not there the way I heard it from the people that I heard from in Ward thirteen. So I'm more open to a referral on this one because I think that, again, as I said earlier in the first referral, these are ticking on different clocks in terms of the sixty days that we have to fill the vacancy. And we have more time on this one, so I'm willing to entertain the referral on this one. That being said, I will emphasize again that if the second place candidate in Ward six does apply, I will certainly be giving the ranked ballot results heavy, heavy consideration in regard to his ability to fill the seat.
Thanks very much. Councillor Eppelst?
Thank you, your worship. And I, one of the reasons that I referred or voted to refer this to council was that I didn't know whether or not the second place candidate was interested in running again. During the meeting, I texted texted him but didn't receive a response back. And so I didn't think it was appropriate for us to pick a method at that point. I'm I'm okay with going forward with this suggestion as it is. And again, it will give us a little time to consider. Whereas previously, we had little or no time to grapple with that. I would also point out that this one, I think, requires a little this is not quite as straightforward. And although I would might have considered a similar process for this one, I believe that the letter from Ms. Marie Blash throws a bit of a wrinkle into this. And so this, the process is being recommended, I think should work well in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Then we'll call the question. Oh, I'm sorry, Councillor Pelosi, I apologize. I just saw you come in there.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. I'll be supporting this, just as I was willing to support it for Ward thirteen. Concerns with comments and conversations that's been had, both in chambers and outside of it, including social media, that one process is fine for one ward, not fine for the other. That now they're happy to consider other applicants. Comments that we didn't know at committee if Mr. Bloxham would be interested in the same process as filling as what we were looking at filling for Ward thirteen. The question wasn't asked. I'd also texted Mr. Bloxham and did have an answer that he would be willing to let his name stand. And we didn't have a communication from Mr. John Fife Miller at committee in writing saying he'd be interested in the appointment or not. But that didn't seem to be part of the process or the consideration or matter, really. So just really, I think another councillor had referred to it before as mental gymnastics of what suits preferences. I was delighted to see so many applications and letters from the public of people who are willing to serve the community, including those who have run, those who have served before as electeds. Grateful for that, as it is a big job and much to be done. As people are calling, the clock is ticking and now there's more time. It depends what you feel the clock is ticking for. If you're talking about budget discussions and considerations as budget chair, those conversations aren't waiting, they're coming. So the residents of, I guess, Ward thirteen is taken care of now. But for residents of Ward six, several councillors are having budget town halls, including myself, and those residents are welcome at all them, in addition to the council PPM coming up in November. So once again, grateful for the opportunity to actually have a conversation about how we're going to do this. But still really concerned about where we're at and comments from colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the Deputy Mayor, take the chair for a moment, please. Yes, I have the chair. I'll go to the mayor. I want to be clear, if I could, colleagues. What I indicated, and I want to be very specific, I said if the referral is defeated and the committee's recommendation is supported, I will happily put forward the name of Mr. Bloxham tonight for consideration as Ward six councillor for largely the same reasons as I put forward the name of Mr. John Fife Miller. And I would say to you, as I indicated in my earlier comments, I felt that what this did, this election process that we had back in twenty eighteen gave us the strongest sense of voter indication of support for candidates than we would otherwise have in an appointment process. And I made that clear before. I'm not going to address the issue whether incumbency has its advantages or not. I would tell you that Councillor Lewis, I think, made it clear because I don't think incumbency equals invincibility. And what I would say here, though, is that if this referral fails, which is, I'm more than pleased to put forward Mr. Bloxham as the councillor for Ward six. Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Chair. I'll return the chair to the mayor. I see no other speakers. So with that, let's call the question. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Councillor Lehman, you just got in.
Thank you, your worship. I find these two processes different. As I said when I spoke to the earlier motion, what weighed heavily with me was the wishes of the voters in the ward. I find in Ward six, this is not as clear cut as it was in Ward thirteen. First of all, it wasn't really a ranked ballot because there was only two candidates. It was essentially first past the post. And the margin was a lot greater between the first place and second place candidate than it was in thirteen. Also, this gives me a time to consider, again, voters' wishes and how that might, I might come to that conclusion. And the people being considered for this post. So it's a very similar process, I find, that we went through with the past candidate. The exception being is that, again, it was not as clear cut in the past election as it was in thirteen with this particular ward.
Thanks very much. Any other comments or questions? Councillor Hopkins, please.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I just want to thank Councillor Helmer and Councillor Cassidy for taking the time to think this through and come up with a process. I really do appreciate that. That's what we're doing here with this referral. Unfortunately, we did not have a process with the last decision that we made. So I am very supportive of this going forward. And again, I'm pleased to see the number of applicants that would like to submit their names forward to be part of that process. So thank you again.
Thank you. Other comments? Then let's call a question.
Councillor Turner?
Just need a bit more time thinking about it.
Closing the vote, motion passes twelve to one.
That's my report, your worship.
It says that we now have to we look for a mover and seconder for this motion as amended, moved by Councillor Cassidy, seconded by I see Councillor Lewis, thank you. Any discussion? Then let's call a question.
Motion carries thirteen to zero.
Thank you, Councillor Cassidy. Now, for the thirteenth report of Civic Works, I'll call Councillor Pelosi, please.
Thank you, your worship. All votes at committee were been given notice. Do you have anything pulled separate unless you have?
I have not, but I will ask if anyone wishes to have any of these items voted separately. Councillor Van Merden?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to vote on four point one, number six, one hundred Stanley Street. Separately, I did vote against this at committee. So we could pull that. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Anyone have any other item they wish to have voted on separately? Back to you, Councillor Pelosi.
Thank you, worship. In regards to item two point one through to two point four, I'll put them all on the floor. Noting the traffic and bylaw, traffic and parking bylaws were just routine ones. And item two point four was electric vehicle charging stations was that the city wasn't successful in obtaining a hundred thousand dollars in money. So this is the transfer agreement and thanking staff for their effort on that to bring a hundred thousand back to London.
Thank you. I'll presume you're including item five, the deferred matters list as well?
Yeah, which has also been updated by staff.
So noted. So noted. Thank you. Comments or questions, but all items except item four point one? I see none. Let's call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to zero.
Councillor Pelosi?
One on the floor, this is in regards to one hundred Stanley Street. We had a request for delegation status. They did provide their slide deck, which is within the package. We received the delegation and staff have told us that on November second, an actual report from staff in regards to one hundred Stanley Street will be coming forward. So that's next election committee cycle.
Thank you. Comments or questions? I see none. We'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries twelve to one.
I can close.
Thank you very much. For the fifteenth report of Planning Environment, I'll turn it over to Councillor Hopkins, please.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to put the fifteenth report of the Planning and Environment Committee on the floor. I have not heard from anyone wanting an item to be removed.
Does anyone wish to have any item voted on separately? Back to you, Councillor Hopkins.
Thank you. So I will put all items on the floor. It was a busy night at planning. There were a number of public participation meetings, five in fact, one of them being the approval of the Masonville Secondary Plan. And also a good presentation from staff on environmental management guidelines updates, a presentation on that. And that is going out for circulation. And I just want to bring to council's attention the housekeeping amendments to the secondary plans as well, which are going out for circulation. And with that, I move
Thank you so much. Any comments, other comments or questions with respect to the Plan Environment Committee report? Councillor Pelosi?
Thank you, worship, and thank you to committee, as I did have something for Ward twelve at the PAC that was a PPM. And I just wanted to welcome Councillor Hopkins to the chair of PAC, recognizing she's taken over. Thank you.
Ditto on that. Thank you very much, Councillor Pelosi. Any other comments or questions? See none. We will, pardon me, colleagues, we will call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to zero.
Hopkins, we're good? Thanks very much. The fourteenth, now the fourteenth report of Community Protective Services, I'll call Councillor Helmer, please.
I'll put the entire report on the floor. There were no divided votes or anything like that. Committee was a very brief meeting. We did have a great presentation from staff, just very brief about the coordinated access program here in London.
Does anyone wish to have any of the items voted on separately? See now, we're back to you putting it on the floor, Councillor Helmer?
Let's vote.
Let's do that. We'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to zero.
Thank you, Councillor Helmer. Now for the fourteenth please.
To put the fourteenth report of SBPC on the floor, I cannot do number eight, though, because I've declared a conflict on that. So I'm happy to put the rest of it on the floor unless colleagues would like something dealt with separately.
Well, acknowledging eight, let's first ask if there are any items that, again, please, the colleagues would like to have voted on separately. Again, please, the colleagues would like to have voted on separately. Then back to you, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, so that means items one through seven and nine, um, I'm happy to put on the floor.
Comments or questions? I see none. We'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to zero.
I'll now call on councillor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. SPPC, I will put item eight on the floor, the University of Western Ontario Board of Governors.
Okay, I note that there were two, uh, colleagues who declared conflicts, but any comments or questions with respect to that item? See none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries ten. Two's.
Thank you, uh. Deputy Mayor?
Uh, yes, for the fourth report of the Audit Committee, uh, there is one item, uh, from this special committee meeting. It is. Uh, the request for proposal, um, twenty-one dash twenty-six for internal audit services. Uh, colleagues will see that after a lengthy, uh, process, um, uh, through the RFP process. Uh, the committee is recommending, uh, the appointment of, uh, an internal auditor. Uh, you can see the details in the report. I'm happy to put, uh, both items from the committee, uh, uh, from the committee report on the floor.
Thanks very much. Comments or questions with regard to the Audit Committee? I see none, therefore we will call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to zero.
Thanks, and thank you, Deputy Mayor. Colleagues, there are no deferred matters. There are no inquiries, and, uh, I'm not over any emergent motions. But we all have some bylaws, uh, that to deal with. I know that, uh, we've been asked to pill, uh, uh, pull Bill four eighty-five relating to the. Ward thirteen appointment, and I'm just confirming with the clerk if there's another item to be dealt with separately. Colleagues, we're just clarifying. So colleagues, we're going to be dealing with, uh, items forty-four through five thirteen inclusive. And, uh, and, uh, we will do with Bill forty-five relating to the Ward thirteen appointment separately. Colleagues, I'm just going to bring to your attention that, uh, Bill five ten has been revised slightly in that there was a map that was. Uh, separately included since then. So we're dealing with those, uh, bills with the exception of forty-five. And, uh, I'm going to be looking for a mover and seconder for introduction and first reading of those bills. Do I have a mover, please? I see councillor Van Meer Bergen, seconded by councillor Hillier. Let's call the vote, please.
Councillor Helmer? Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to zero.
Colleagues, now for. Uh, Bills forty-four through four- through five thirteen exclusive of Bill forty-five. I'll look for a mover. And a seconder. Moved by councillor Pelosi, seconded by councillor Van Holst. Any comments or questions? Seeing now, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to zero.
For mover and seconder, third reading enactment of Bills forty-four through five thirteen exempting Bill forty-five. Do I have a mover, please? Councillor Lehman. Seconded by councillor Hopkins. Thank you very much. We'll call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to zero.
Colleagues. Look for a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor Lewis, seconded by councillor Lehman. We will call the vote.
Your worship?
Yes, please.
Hopkins?
Go ahead.
What bylaw is this?
Oh, this is the one we exempted, uh, we indicated we exempted from the first series. This relates to the Ward thirteen appointment, councillor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Closing the vote, motion carries seven to six.
Colleagues, now, uh, I'll look for a mover and seconder of, uh. Uh, for second reading of Bill. Forty-five. Do I have a mover, please? Councillor Van Meer Bergen, seconded by councillor Van Holst. Comments or questions? Councillor Helmer?
It's never too late to do the right thing. Somebody switched their vote.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Then we'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries seven to six.
Now, colleagues, uh. Third reading and enactment of Bill forty-five. I'll look for a mover and a seconder. Moved by councillor Lewis, seconded by. Councillor Lehman. We will call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries.
So to the public, we're about to go. Deal with several items, and I'll be asking the clerk in a moment just to clarify for the, for your purpose, what we're going to be dealing with. And I'll just ask the patience of colleagues to, uh, as we, uh, as we just set up to go into a closed session. I'll look to the clerk then just to confirm. Uh, what we will be dealing with in closed session.
Your worship, uh, the matters to be dealt with in closed session are seven matters that are outlined in the public council agenda. They include several matters related to land acquisition, personal matters regarding identifiable individuals with respect to the. Twenty twenty-two Mayor's New Year's Honors List. Matters regarding solicitor client privilege and a matter related to commercial and financial information supplied and confidence. To the corporation by an external organization.
Thank you. So with that, I'll look for a motion to go into closed session. Councillor Hillier, seconded by councillor Lewis. Thank you very much. We'll call the question.
Councillor Van Holst? Councillor Van Holst? Closing the vote, motion carries twelve to zero.
The, uh. See you in just a few moments. Thank you.